I think what you do is like, I'm not people in the office.
Today I heard Sanjay Gupta being hard to identify COVID and against, you know, isolated. It's either trying to stay through a hunk or chunk or monk or drunk.
Kim, how are you, bro?
I'm good. Oh my goodness. You're coming? He messing, he messing with.
I just wanted everybody's attention.
I'm not waiting that way.
Five seconds early.
By the box. Maybe it's box you're early.
Watching Lindsay come in today, get peanut boys and situlents.
Why anybody wants to then.
I mean, I just had to see it so far.
I just can't even.
I can see which.
I just don't, I don't. I probably want to see that in the journal. I really have. I really see that's hard.
I don't think you agree on anything. Nobody doesn't put it right. Everybody's got all the answers and put them on the house.
That's the problem.
Yeah. We're just surprised.
Well, that's my way, it's probably your highway.
Social media is destroying that plan, you know?
Well, not while they're, not while they're silenced. That's kind of fun.
Talking about impulsiveness. Goodness, everybody on social media should think that he's eating drugs.
I'm sorry, I'm just too weak for it. Makes for the only way I look at it.
So Warren Stockenberg doesn't have my address, I can tell you that.
No, he doesn't have my address.
That's the wrong.
That was all of our addresses. All right.
Too many fourteen twenty seconds. Talking about something in the kitchen.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, my gosh, you, you take a look at something and then on your front page, it's like there's, there's fifteen different things. That was a really good summary, Kim.
Oh, so long.
Of the history of the, you know, very recent history, the last eight, ten years of the law for the most part. That was a fun year.
Yeah, that was very wonderful.
I get a couple of questions, but I did, um, for the most part, we've, we've got to do, we got to.
All right, it's seven o'clock and I will call the word, the meeting of the work supervisors for Tuesday, October fifth, two thousand twenty-one. Start with pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to God, the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, please, in the moment of silence.
Thank you. Um, October's breast cancer awareness. I just ask that everybody think of the people who are taking care of those breast cancer survivors and all of those survivors that they are. Thank you very much.
I also want to put in just a word of, um, appreciation for a very fine human being who passed this past week. Former executive director of Chester County Planning Commission and a mentor to me in years past, George Fasic. Some of you may know him, but a terrific human being, was a great planner with the county, did a lot of good things. So we'll miss George on the planet.
Um, announce that the meeting is being live streamed on YouTube. Uh, chairman's report, and I want to remind everybody, our annual pumping fest will take place, uh, in the park on Saturday, October sixteenth, and actively start at ten AM. Um, and our food truck and music festival will be, uh, take place in also the East Coast from Park on Saturday, October sixteenth, from two thirty to six thirty. Looking forward to that. One other public announcement, our chairman's report is that the planning commission meeting originally scheduled for tomorrow, the sixth of October, has been canceled. Uh, the Malburn Institute Land Development Discussion will take place during a regularly scheduled planning commission meeting on Wednesday, November third. We have no public hearing tonight, um, no emergency reports, uh, so we'll go down to, uh, approval of the minutes as presented. Comments? We have two sets of minutes, September four, three sets, I'm sorry, uh, fourteenth, uh, twenty-first.
I have no comments.
I had, um, correction in the September twenty-first minutes, Chris. Um, this is not a typographical error, it's line thirty-two. The food truck and music fest is going to be two thirty to six thirty. I just want to make sure that it is accurate so that anyone reading the minutes doesn't get confused with the time change. Um, and under, so it says four PM, uh, line thirty-two on page one. So it's two thirty to six thirty?
Six thirty.
So again, it's not a typo, it's just a, make, make sure that it's accurate throughout, since the time was changed. Line, the next line, received twenty-five hundred dollar grant, rarely be used to purchase basic bee protection clothing, that we need to at least qualify that. Um, I think it's, yeah, I don't know, um. Also on September twenty-first line of page four, line ten, Sack is responsible for maintaining the plastic bag recycling program. So clarifying there, and I think that's it.
Good, thanks.
Anybody else?
Anybody else have any other comments, gentlemen?
No.
All right, um.
I would move to, uh, accept the minutes with the corrections for date September fourteenth, twenty-first, and the twenty-eighth as submitted. Second motion.
Public comments? Hearing none, I'll call a question, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries for nothing. Pressures report. Dave, anything on the highlight?
Um, mostly ordinary repairs. There was a great number of tree removal, about thirty thousand dollars in addition to plantings. Um, and then we also did receive our state aid for volunteer firefighters relief associations, which we distributed out and filed with the state. Uh, other than that, there were some expenses still with the trail. There was some lag time on some, uh, of those pieces. Pretty much it.
Anybody have any questions on the bill as we?
Oh, just one note, um, first note, uh, on that distribution of the volunteer firefighters relief, it's always good to know the distribution and that the municipality has the discretion to distribute it to those with the, uh, volunteer firefighter relief association entities. So we give about ninety-five percent to our Goshen, a volunteer fire relief association, and five percent to the Malburn Volunteer Fire Relief Association. Um, the other one I wanted to ask is the, um, are, the, uh, I know there's an expense in here, is we're upgrading our phone system, replacing it as, as, in that needed. Do we, um, do we have the telecommunications system in our capital schedule? Is that, is that, do we appreciate for that? I thought we did, but I wasn't sure. I didn't look at it. That's all, that's all I hear.
Any other questions? Okay. Move that we accept the receipts.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we graciously accept the receipts and further expenditures as presented in the expenditure register and then summarize to the treasurer's report.
I'll second, I'll second.
Any other comments on the treasurer's report? Hearing none, all questions, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries for nothing. Uh, under old business, um, we need to look at, um, amending resolution we passed in September regarding the tax service provided by Chester County.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you said, the board passed in, on September seventh, a resolution authorizing Chester County to start collecting real estate taxes on behalf of the township. Uh, I would classify this as more as a housekeeping item. There was language in the resolution as the county was working with their new solicitor, uh, that they felt needed to be tweaked. Uh, most notably, the statute in their stock resolution that they gave us cited a statute that was not, uh, actually a statute that gave us the power to have such an arrangement. So, uh, they wanted that updated. They also wanted to, uh, deputize the county treasurer in the resolution as, uh, being the specific person, uh, who is able to collect the taxes on our behalf. So just, just again, a few, uh, minor language tweaks with the process, everything about what we talked about and, for lack of a better term, litigated through, uh, during, during the time we talked about this is all staying the same. So again, this is resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-ten.
The, um, on page two of the resolution, and I think I understand it, and so I'm going to believe that it's correct, but I just want to make sure, on the second page of the resolution, the second whereas, under number three, uh, whereas the service shall commence upon execution of agreement by all parties and continue until, is that correct? Then December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, that's just to get it started and close the gap?
Yeah.
Okay, fine.
I mean, yeah, this, this is the, the dates and, and all that, and that paragraph wasn't really clearly outlined. That's another tweak they made, uh, minor one, so.
Oh, yeah, good. And then just one other syntax item, that, I don't think it needs to be changed in the resolution, uh, but the use of the word ensure. Uh, we're not insuring, uh, in the sense of, uh, taking out coverage. Uh, the words used several times, we are assuring with the use of the word properly, I think, is ensure, E-N-S-U, or just a, just a reference for syntax. Thank you.
Um, I have a quick question. Uh, so, uh, we had a resolution that we had passed recognizing you, Derek, not specifically you by name, but just the township manager to execute certain things. So they actually named the treasurer, the county treasurer. So will we have to do this every time? If, if we choose to move forward with, with county each cycle?
Yep.
Will we have to do this each time with the new treasurer's name, or would we be able to just at least, uh, allow the county treasurer and the deputy treasurer to?
I think the way they did the language, we're going to have to keep doing it. And I think the county.
Just making sure.
The county is basically trying to get out of contracts and perpetuity so they can review periodically. And putting specific names in there, I think, allows them to do that, so that you have that checks along the way.
Um, so, Mr. Chairman, I would, I would, um, move that we, the East Ocean Township Board of Supervisors authorize Chester County Treasurer, as named in the resolution, to commence collection of East Ocean Township real estate taxes consistent with the terms and conditions set forth herein and is set for in the formally, formally executed agreement, resolution twenty twenty-one dash two-ten.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Public, hearing none, all questions, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. We're into new business.
Thanks for getting that set up, Derek and Dave.
So, so firstly, now, in new businesses, the, um, small wireless, uh, facility ordinance discussion that we need to have, uh, technology is changing rapidly and our ordinances are lagging a bit behind, um, so we're going to.
I'm just going to hand it right over to Kim, who is from Buckley Ryan, and she's a bit of an expert in this field, so she could take it up from here.
I don't know about an expert, but. Or tonight. Well, tonight I am. Um, hopefully all have had a chance to look at the, I know that I sent out, um, kind of giving you a little bit of the history of small wireless and, um, basically what we're trying to achieve here is we're trying to pull, um, any provisions that regulate small wireless facilities out of your zoning ordinance and separately regulate them with a standalone ordinance. Um, we're allowed to do that because essentially your small wireless facilities are controlled by, by zoning. So we can use standalone ordinance to, to regulate them. Uh, it also allows us to change them, changing the provisions if we need to, with a little more flexibility than having those provisions in your zoned ordinance. Um, included with the, the small wireless ordinance, um, I guess the company is, is some design regulations. So, you know, essentially, it's a pretty in-depth conversation, but what I can say is that we don't have a lot of ability to control small wireless facilities, but where they go, where they're located, but we can control the design. Um, the only thing that I think that has changed most recently is Act fifty was, was passed in Pennsylvania. And there is a provision in Act fifty that seems to allow for that, if you've got a neighborhood where all your utilities are required to be underground, then we can mandate that new small wireless are allowed in that area because they'll be treated the same as all other utilities. And no other utilities are allowed to be above ground, so why should small wireless? However, Act fifty does provide a mechanism where, um, a provider could still request a hearing and explain to you why they really need to have their facility, yeah, before, before the supervisors.
I read the guidelines, it said that all residents affected had to agree.
And I picked up on that.
Which I thought was really interesting, because we're trying to, uh, and we, we have a number of neighborhoods in East Ocean that have, uh, underground utilities. I live in one.
Yeah, same.
So, uh, and I think Percy'sville villages, all.
They're underground.
All underground.
Ocean Downs, try to chase, uh, northern numbers.
So quite a, quite a number of, uh, communities. So I guess my first question is, under the ordinance, I saw it in the guidelines, um, mention of Act fifty, but I didn't, uh, did I miss it in the draft ordinance? Um, and should, should it be in there or not?
I put it in the design guidelines.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where it is, actually.
But those are guidelines. Are they enforceable as?
They are.
What are they intending to, to code?
Ordinance.
So, right, so, so it's referenced by, by.
Thank you for that clarification.
It actually says in your ordinance, the small wireless ordinance, it says if there's a conflict between the ordinance and the design regulations, the design regulations control.
Let me follow that up with one, David, because I, I, I picked up on that, and, and in these residential districts with underground utilities, um, there's, if, if there's a, an indication to place an above-ground, um, device, and it says here, um, uh, if, if a proper, if a property owner objects, that, um, then the waiver can't be granted, but what if, what if every property owner objects? And since, again, uh, Kim, you indicated, and as we've read here, that, that, the local government has very little control over, over this, on design, that's about it. What's the process if everybody objects, um, to installing one of these? I mean.
Well, well, I mean, the person that, it's only the owner of the property.
Where it's to be placed.
They object.
So it goes to the next property over and they object, is, I mean, you, you could get into one of those dominoes as to where, where it ends up falling. I, I just, it was a curiosity question, I guess, because I, I, you know, played that scenario out to the extreme.
And the technology is line of sight, technology, as I understand it. So if you've got a property, it skips a property, it could be an issue with range.
Yeah, usually the range is pretty short and it's all underground, so there has to be a connection.
Yeah.
It's not a wire. It will be interesting to see though, exhibition, some, I'm finding that some townships, even though their facilities are underground, they're interested in this technology. Because they want the ordinance to be able to connect. People are working at home and, you know, the small wireless do allow you to connect quicker and download faster. But, you know, what the idea is, your design regulations, if, if you're going to allow that, you can dictate what they look like in that neighborhood. I mean, they look a little more pleasing to the eye than you can have regulations.
We showed pictures of examples.
Yeah, and, you know, the design guidelines and the ordinance, I mean, a lot of that is, is my own creation, like, even design guidelines, I just have to start.
Yes.
I pulled, I pulled guidelines all over the country, and we got to figure out what it sets. So there's pictures, like, so, for example, there's figures and examples of.
I enjoyed the pictures.
You did?
Liked pictures.
Do we, do we have any idea how many of these are going to come into East Ocean? Do we have any here now, or do we have any application for?
I wanted to know that too. I think you already have Crown Castle.
We have Crown Castle, we have a few, the DAS, uh, the taller ones, uh, one over near Wellington, I know there's, there are a few others that were installed in the last.
Yeah, my question, I, I, I don't know this either. I have to find out, is it a DAS, or are they all, are they actual small wireless facilities? So I know there's a little bit of a difference between those, but I know Crown Castle was doing a lot of the DAS.
Yeah.
Height, height is one of them, right?
Yeah, some of Crown Castles might qualify smaller, so much.
Yeah.
And when they come in, um, we can, uh, charge a yearly fee, is that correct?
Yes, and that's all, no ordinance, and that's by statute, you know.
Two hundred and seventy dollars a year?
Correct.
Okay, um, that's why I want to know how many of them are, are going to be, uh, because that may be a source of income, especially if we lose the towers.
Yeah, typically happens, um, I worked with two groups in, in Carroll, Westchester, typically they come in and they show you a map. And West Ocean, they showed us a map, and they plotted out where they, and they know exactly where they need them.
Yeah.
And they'll plot it out, and they'll discuss with them, and you can say, well, you know, do you want to put this corner of this road because you moved it one road over? And usually they're, they're pretty agreeable. Usually they don't, they don't, they don't want to fight, they want to get them as quickly as possible.
I mean, once we got in East Bradford before I left there, we had, we had the same kind of discussion and, and it worked out, it settled, but there was a resident in, which was good.
Yeah.
Kim, could, just by way of example, my neighborhood doesn't have streetlights. And it's dark, and a lot of people walk the dogs at night. Could we insist that they install, um, you know, attractive streetlights as, as antennas and, and functioning streetlights where they have the wire?
Uh, it's, it's actually a design.
Yes.
I saw that, I was wondering how far we could go as far as requiring, or they say, well, we'll put the pole up, but we won't want the lights, or could we make that a?
No, you, that, that's requiring in this design regulations, I think that's pages on, um, but they're, they're totally pretty willing to do that.
You just have to get the property to then agree on the light. DAS.
Between property.
Expect David being as greedy as he is to want solar.
Solar.
Absolutely.
There you go.
Can we make that a requirement? Can we make solar requirement for them, so that there's no other infrastructure that they depend on? It means. Good, I hadn't thought of that.
Okay, um, and then, um, the other component is, do we have to have, does it have to be a certain height? Do they, in order to work properly, does it have to be fifty feet or twenty feet?
The other is fifty feet.
Do, um, no, I mean, the small wireless are defined, so they're always going to be low, less than fifty feet.
Or less than fifty, and others can be as high as a hundred.
Couldn't, but those are, those are regulated by a different section of the ordinance.
Yeah, yes, I mean, you're right.
Okay, so, so it's not like we can say, you can make an attractive bush around it and have it be a small thing. It has to be a certain height, nor to be a kind of.
Right.
That's why I'm making sure that I'm, I'm clear on that, okay?
What are we doing with this? Are we just discussing this?
We're just discussing it.
Considering whether to author, consider authorization to advertise for public hearing, so at this point, it's just introducing it, getting any comments, suggestions, and then, and then if we want to agree on a date to, this has to go to the county anyway, right?
Well, I already said, the one that talks about a mandate or some of the ordinance to pull small wireless out, we already went and sent it to the county, because that's pretty standard.
Okay.
But the small wireless doesn't, the small wireless ordinance itself and the design regulations don't have to be counted, so.
Okay, so, I mean, we could, we could authorize advertising for, we don't have an absolute, well, there's probably a deadline somewhere, but we could do it, no, later in November, couldn't we, with a public hearing?
You could, I mean, the, the Act fifty, there's, there's an argument in the Act fifty, if you don't get something in place soon, then the Act governs your, your installations.
Oh, and then overrule, oh, it's deemed approved or.
But, but the, the line was just kind of confusing. The line was basically says, you know, your, your ordinance you got can't conflict with Act fifty. Well, your ordinance, I'm not talking to you, it's conflicting with Act fifty. So even if we do it afterwards, there shouldn't be an issue.
I personally think we should just try to shoot for the end, before the end of the year, I think is good.
Yeah, I think we're there.
Did you say that, that federal regulations were confusing?
Right?
Well, this came from the state.
The state, this is state.
It's so clear. How much money are they giving us to put this in?
If you feel comfortable, if you feel comfortable making a motion to authorize advertising, we could, we could pick a day right now, if you, or we could, we could table it and you can talk about a day for another time.
So we advertise it, then there'll be a public hearing?
It'd be a public hearing, yeah. So.
We still have time to tweak.
So just on that, though, and again, this is where timing comes in, November ninth, we would be discussing, um, our, uh, last budget. It's a regular meeting, but it's also, we're going to try to work in some budgets up. November sixteenth is preliminary budget. So my personal opinion is maybe the first, uh, the first meeting in December, really, is for, for public hearing.
Are we going to advertise it?
Yes.
All right, so, we all agree that we, okay to advertise?
Well, for you guys.
I, I would make a motion to.
I have to see that, I have to see.
Do I need a motion?
We, we do need, we do need a motion.
Game, you're just.
For this?
To authorize a public hearing, we do need.
Okay, yeah, okay.
You're not passing that.
So.
Just authorizing the.
Just, I, I'll make a motion to authorize a hearing on the matter of ordinance twenty twenty-one, oh dear, I guess it's going to be, it hasn't been designed yet. So, uh, on these small wireless facilities, um.
December seventh.
For the hearing to be held on December the seventh.
And this will be put on the website to people to review it, so, okay, I'll be available.
Do you anticipate some changes to what I've given you before that date?
Only the one.
Solar.
Right, that was the only one, the solar.
Solar.
I read through it, I didn't, you know, I thought the design guidelines were good.
I think the solar idea is great, so I can add that line easily.
Yeah, that's good, and I didn't have anything after I read it.
I did either.
That was the only thing I thought of, but I'm not going to actually, so, um, so I, I made the motion.
I'll second.
Chris is going to make a little bit more open.
I'll second, or second to authorize that, that endorsement.
Have a comment, have a.
Any other comment, public comment?
What?
Are these for air rights?
Up front. Let's see who you are, speaking to the mic.
It's because of YouTube, Joe, we've got to have everybody at the, at the microphone.
Are these for air rights or land rights?
Same to Mike.
Kim, you have a mic. Are these for air rights or land rights?
Um, it's for either, well, it's coming out of the ground, so it's land, it's not air. It's right of ways, in right of ways. All the small wireless utilities are in the right of way.
You're not purchasing land, you're purchasing air rights.
No one's purchasing, purchasing, anything. If they come in, they're wanting to seek, um, like a right of way, a right to go in, a right of way, so there's no exchange.
On public land or private land?
Public.
Okay, so who owns the land that they're going through on the easement?
On the easement? Well, the township will have the easement.
Okay, so the township will still own the land?
Correct.
Okay. If for any reason they go bankrupt, and somebody's has to be taken down, so much of the antenna here, um, who pays for that?
First provision.
To the ordinance. They do. Well, if they go bankrupt, who takes it down?
Well, ultimately, if, if they're bankrupt, then the township would have to take it down and have to.
An invoice.
File a lien or.
File a lien.
Invoice who? You mean the bankruptcy?
That would be a challenge, I agree.
It would be a challenge.
Yeah, sure.
I hope it always is.
They never get it.
Yeah.
But, and, and, and this happens more often than not. So, um, is there a bond requirement?
I don't think I would.
No, I didn't see it. I didn't see it.
I think.
Can we require a bond of the federal regs or the state regs?
What type of bond?
Performance bond?
Performance bond, surety bond. Look, I mean, as I said, there's fifteen thousand different surety bonds, so is it a construction and performance bond, is it a? For example, AIG has a program that, where we develop, where we pay X amount of dollars in this pool. So if they do go bankrupt, everybody can substitute against the pool and then take out what it cost them.
And not have to go through a bankruptcy court where you don't get anything.
And, and the problem, I guess, that a landlord cannot delegate the responsibility. So that, if that thing comes down, it costs three times as much to take it down as it does to put it up.
Well, that's a good question. Why don't you, why don't you look into that?
I actually, I'm not, I'm not percent sure that you can't, you can't have escrow be, be required or bond required. Because they're trying, federal government, the state government, they're, they're trying to roll these out, they're trying to encourage 5G. So anything that's a hindrance, even, you know, that's why the fees are set at a certain amount. So, I mean, I'll double check that, but I'm fairly certain.
Well, and this also comes under the PUC, ultimately, correct?
Well, it, it can if, if the small wireless qualifies as you.
Well, like Crown Castle was, was an example of the, um, of the DAS.
Correct.
And, but, but, um, there was no requirement there that could be put in place for a bonding that, you know, having them submit a bond, so. So that, that may or may not be possible, but it's a good question. I see, we have enough time, at least, to know it.
I can double check that.
Yeah, all right, yeah, good one.
Um, can, can, could, could another, so let's say one company does go bankrupt. Could another company come in and swoop in and say, we're going to take up all these assets? And, and then pay a fee to us, and then?
It was like a separate fee.
Okay, so that's, so that's a possibility then, as long as that's possible.
But, but Joe's, Joe's right, though, I mean, and as, as you know in your memo, the, the technology is, is changing, and some of these companies are changing that quickly too, whether you're taking over, or they, they, they lose out in the competitive environment. And, you know, stuff gets.
Yeah, and your larger, your larger tower requirements to require that to post it, something like that, which is pretty, you posted it, so. I love it.
Okay. All right, we're good, we're going to have a topic, we've got a, we've got a motion. And so we need to call a question. Any further public comment? Call the question, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
No, motion carries for nothing.
And then maybe at the next meeting, or thereafter, we'll get an update as to the status of it, if there's something, or you'll, you'll let us know.
We will. Obviously, we have some time too, and part of the reason I knew that is because we have another agenda item for another hearing. Probably said that might take place in November, which is another reason, I don't want to space it out.
And when we post this on the, the website, will we also include Kim's brief on the background of the, the, not just the ordinance, but it'd be nice to have the, I think that brief was good that Kim did for.
Yeah, I mean, well, it's in the packet, this.
So it's public.
So it's already public out there, but we could redo it again.
If, if, if you put it in a special place in the ordinance, or in the website, thanks. Thanks, Kim.
All right, next gen item is to consider authorization for auditing firm selection for West Ocean Police Department, which we attempted to do, but Derek will take us through what you get.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is an interesting one. John and I, we were at the last WIGO meeting, I think Michelle was there as well. So essentially, the auditing, the auditor that WIGO used to have had to retire due to health reasons. And Kathy Broll, who does the, is the business manager at WIGO, went out to try to select an auditing firm. I think she put twenty RFPs out there, maybe more, and she got zero interest back. One of the big rea, not big, the, the main reason that happened is there's some stipulation in the current contract that says any professional services of that kind, they can't use anybody that East Ocean, West Town, or Thornbury uses. Well, the problem is, East Ocean, West Town, and Thornbury use three different auditors, and they are literally the only three auditors that do any kind of government work.
That's all the challenge.
So we had a discussion at the commission meeting. We felt that it was not in the vein of a solicitor, where it was a clear conflict of interest. And in order to actually, you know, have auditing and actually get it done, we were of the opinion that we should probably change that provision and allow West Town, East Ocean Police to have an auditing firm that one of us have. I will say there's no state requirement on this or anything like that. This was just a self-imposed thing that they did at some point. Kathy couldn't even remember really why at the time, so, you know, I think we all felt pretty comfortable with it. And John can step in if you'd like, but I, I think we felt comfortable with it. And we are recommending that resolution, what is it, 2021 dash 2009 be considered.
Do we, when they get an audit early, an auditor, are they going to do 2019 and 20?
Have to.
Yeah, I think they have to.
And then our partner, West Town has to approve the same.
They just did last.
Oh, they did, okay.
I got the, I got the executed document from John.
Thornbury, of course, does not.
No.
And then the question is, of the three auditors, it's me, it's Katski, there's Barbara Khan, there's.
Maui.
Maui. How will a decision be made as to which auditor to use? Are you going to seek proposals from each of them?
I, I believe Kathy plans on seeking RFPs, but that'll be handled by the WIGO business manager, not by the townships.
Okay, so that's in their court, and they'll, they'll let us.
They just need the authorization to actually give the RFP to them to start.
And then the police commission would approve that one, then? That'll come into your agenda?
Yeah, that would, that would come in.
Okay, definitely.
So, so what we're being asked to, 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 tonight is, is to move to authorize amending the police service agreement with West Town to allow police commissioner to hire an auditor that may be affiliated with another participating unit of community.
So.
We have the language, so that, I'll, I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Second then.
Uh, any further, John, you have anything to add as far as?
The only thing I want to add, and you can see it in the red type there, is that we are continuing to disallow any attorney who's working for one of the townships to work for the police commission. But that's it.
Okay. Uh, any public comment? Call the question, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
No, motion carries for nothing. Uh, next item is to consider authorizing advertisement for hearing on November to consider amendment to the LED sign ordinance. We have a real life situation where the giant supermarket wants to put in a harder charger. And there's a company that does that, but also reduces the cost in exchange for being able to post advertising on their, on their machine. And so that would require us to amend our LED sign ordinance to accommodate that, so Derek, want to give?
Yep, and Kim could actually jump in here, I'll, I'll give a brief overview, but Kim, you worked, I believe you worked on this as well, right?
I didn't work on, I didn't. I didn't work on it directly, but I'm familiar with it.
Okay, sorry, I'm on the spot there. But you can jump in if you have anything to add, because I'm just going to give a brief overview. So essentially, this, this, it's kind of, this amendment is sort of limited in scope to, it would apply to two shopping centers, you know, where the giant is, around Hershey's Mill, and then the shopping center right down the street where Potel moves, and, and, yeah. And so, the Goshen Shopping Center, so those two are the areas we're talking about for this amendment. It would simply allow an LED sign for, as David kind of went into advertised, and it would put stipulations on the time, and I believe it's allowed to be lit up, and it specifically has to do with EV charging stations. So again, this was because it was, as David said, a real life issue, if somebody wanted to come in there and have an EV charging station with LED lights and advertisement and all nine yards. So it was one of those things where, you know, real life kind of, our ordinance kind of got in the way of real life, and we had to decide whether we thought the ordinance should be tweaked accordingly in order to encourage that kind of activity, so.
It's important to note that the planning commission reviewed this and did a lot of work on it.
True, yes, thank you.
We've gone through basically six, it's only for shopping centers. The message displayed has to be static, it can't be animated. Equipment has to have a dimming capability, it's got to be able to be turned off, advertising believing the charging on. Even, you know, transition time between sign changes has to be less than a second, I mean, we've done a lot of work on this. So that's, that's a pretty, pretty sound.
Yeah, it's a lot of work for a small chain, and, you know, maybe more, these could proliferate in the years ahead, I hope they do.
Is any?
No, Mr. Chairman, I can move the authorized staff to advertise a hearing in November to consider this amendment to the LED sign ordinance.
That's what, you know, we're referring to, we have to, we have to.
Yeah, and that's. Yeah, so that's kind of why I like the space that I hear yourself, I can, but I guess we're going to have to, we're going to have to do this in conjunction with, you know, some, some meeting that we're discussing the budget, so.
Well, this should be a fairly quick hearing though, too, there shouldn't be too many objections. This has gone to the county as well, this has already come back from the county, is that correct?
No, it hasn't.
It has not.
Yeah.
Oh, it, it went to the county, I think, at the last planning commission meeting, so we should be getting it back any, any day now.
I'm not, I'm not certain.
Oh, I thought I read one, one of them went to the county, I thought I read one of them.
This one went to the county.
I thought I read that.
Yeah, the planning commissioner, the planning commission, I was at that meeting last month, and that planning, the planning commission actually directed staff to send it to, to us for consideration, but, but up to the county for their suggestions.
I will have to double check that, but I would suggest, just to give us an extra week, November sixteenth, because we, yeah, so we have the last budget workshop, if you will, on the night. So I think that will probably be a little bit more robust of the discussion than even the preliminary budget, since we went through the budget at that point and it hole, so that's my suggestion.
Is there any way, I'm a visual guy, I like the picture of the thing. Is there anybody we can put this in either in the announcement, or advertisement, or in the newsletter? The county, 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 please say.
This point, the website, maybe, that would be good.
Yeah, we, we can do.
I think even the picture of the actual, I, I like the diagram that they sent, but the pictures that they have attached that are the, the EV stations up at the West Town Giant, I think, they're really good too, because it shows you how actually, what they actually.
We just do this.
People could see them.
I would say for this, and then for the other hearing on the other issue, we can do just the latest news section on each of them specifically.
This, I, I just noted that the staff recommendation memo written on September twenty ninth said that the ornament, the recommendation addresses planning commission, staff comments, and is ready for review by the.
Yeah, I saw that pic, yeah.
If the board supports the final draft, there's only ordinance, staff would forward it.
Thank you.
Okay. But, yeah, we, I mean, timeline wise, we should be okay, right? They usually turn these over thirty days or twice.
It's usually thirty days.
I mean, we, yeah, yeah, it has, oh, yeah, so it's October, yeah, if we get it out this week, we should be okay.
Yeah, and if you're in our office, just send it out tomorrow, we can.
Yeah, okay, all right, thanks.
Any comments from the public? I'll call the question on the motion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
No, motion carries for nothing, thank you. Um, next new business item is to consider accepting results of the township cleaning contract bid. As presented the last meeting, there's some questions about it, and we got some further detail.
So this, thank you, Mr. Chairman, this sort of reminded me a little bit of a trash bid, in that we didn't have a robust turnout, and it just seems to be the trend with, with some of the services of municipal government right now. But we did get two, one from Golden Inc., and the other from Clean Right Building Services.
And then in the current contract.
The current contract, we did not bid, not bid.
And I think we probably saw the so-called writing on the wall, that they.
Yes.
May not have cleaned off.
With the fingerprint.
That's a good one, that's a good one. So there's, I would say there's a pretty big discrepancy in the low bid versus the second bidder. The issue is, after reviewing, Steph and I, Mark Miller, we really don't feel comfortable going with the lowest bidder as far as the recommendation to the board. Some of the reasons are, as, wasn't required, but it was strongly suggested that they come out and use a facility and take a look around and see exactly, you know, what we have going on here, they did not do that. There's also details on here about the references. We could not get in touch with the vast majority of the references. Location is a little bit of an issue, in our opinion, they're in Ben Salem. I don't know where they're going to be coming from as far as their employees. And then we also had the fact that Mark Miller does have experience with the other company, they're right next to him, and according to him, they did a good job last time they did clean here, which they did have the contract at some point. Again, we're a little disappointed we didn't get a better turnout for this, but I will say that the Clean Right Building Service of twenty-two thousand one forty would be the one that Mark suggested. Now that, Dave and I actually talked today, and we already built into the budget a, a little bit more than the sixteen thousand two hundred that we are paying right now. So I think we had in the budget twenty thousand one hundred and forty something, somewhere around there. So it would be basically an extra two grand over what we had, sort of baked into the twenty-twenty-two budget. So that's right now where we are. I, I did get, I, we did try to get in touch with the current company to see, you know, if the board decided they want to go back out for rebid, if they would be willing to do a month-to-month basis. We cannot get in touch with them, they won't cross that. This is like for two days in a row. They had some COVID issues, issues with their staff, so they weren't actually here at all last week. So, so, yeah, that's kind of where we are, again, another unfortunate, you know, round of bids for services, and this is kind of where we are. And Mark Miller wanted to make a recommendation to award to Clean Right Building Service.
It's a three-year contract starting in January.
Three or four, is it a three-year?
I believe it's a three-year.
Is there a way to get out of the contract if they're not satisfied?
There's got to be an, an out clause, if, it's got to be something in there for a thirty-day notice or something. Derek, if not, who needs to be, I think?
I'd have to look at the contract.
You know, it, it is a big increase of where we've been, but the, you know, is, you know, these extended year contracts, there is a catch-up period, we, we saw it in the refuse recycling bid, which was up, what was that, up thirty percent?
Yeah.
Thirty-three percent from the, the prior contract period. And now we're moving into a period of inflation, difficulty with employment, hiring. So it, just like the real estate market, it's a seller's market now, it's almost a, an employer's market right now. And they're kind of, I don't know, they're gouging, but it was, you know, it's a big number, you tried to anticipate it, put it into the budget, and you captured most of it, they got good references. I know it's not, you know, a great service when it's not being provided. That's the last thing staff wants to come in with, and have to call them and say, well, you got to come back, and all of that. The other thing is, and I did mention this to Derek today, we do provide the cleaning services as part of our landlord relationship with the district justice office, and whether we were capturing the full cost of the, the number here. And Derek seems to think that that's something worth taking a look at going forward to make sure that we are capturing all the costs that are attendant to that piece of real estate that we're renting out. So there's, there's some review there that could impact some of those dollars.
Um, I'm, I'm wondering, can we actually? Sorry, can we actually put into the, can we put into the contract an exit clause?
Well, you can make that as part of the motion.
Right.
That we, you know, we rely on.
I was going to do that, if, so, then.
If we're not satisfied, we can put it.
I think in thirty days.
Usually what's going to happen, I don't know, it'll be reciprocity, that they'll, they'll want to be able to turn it off. Also.
Oh, yeah, it's got to be, it's got to be.
I'm getting mid-stable.
That's right.
Ooh, that's a new setup.
It is, it's kind of fun, I don't know, it's kind of like summer, it had a little, had a little rhythm. Um, then, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that the board award the contract to the second bidder, which is Clean Right Building Services, in the amount of eighteen forty-five a month, eighteen hundred forty-five a month. And that would be twenty-two thousand one hundred forty dollars a year, with the provision that we have an exit clause for at least a minimum of thirty days' notice.
Second motion.
Um, any public comment about getting taken to the cleaners? Okay.
All right.
All right.
You really do, you really do.
I will call the question, all in favor, aye?
Aye, you really, you really do, Amy, please.
Aye.
Thanks.
I blame it on my grandfather, he was a monster.
Public comment, any public comment?
Did you vote for him?
I did.
Okay.
Did we vote? All right, all of them, we did vote, right?
Yeah, we did vote.
So the next is consider a request by Goshen Monthly Meeting, which is that Goshen's friends folk erect a historical marker near the southeast corner of the intersection. Fascinating history with the background they gave us. So.
I, I, I have a member of Goshen Monthly Meeting here, too, as well.
And I think it's a nice idea, the, the only thing I, I, I looked at when I, when I saw it was the, the wording for the plaque. Uh, I would, well, there was a typo, I think, or there was some syntax, but I, I just thought it maybe the wording could be a little bit, well, get, you know, get an editor. For instance, there is a, the one sentence with Goshenville's growth, just the way. For instance, there is a, the one sentence with Goshen bills growth, just the way that's written to begin with. But a more substantial meeting house was built in 1736, but was later was destroyed by fire. You know, there's its construction. I, I just think for the sake of the posterity and putting this into a nice metal plaque or whatever, that it have a little bit better King's English. Other than that, I'm supportive of the.
And this gentleman is their, let me see.
Their representative.
Vono attorney.
Well, you look like you know the English language, I mean, I, you, you've read it. Say hello.
Good evening, Supervisors. My name is Jack Ambick, I'm here on behalf of Goshen.
Howdy, Jack.
I am a lawyer. We had interest, the meeting sent me here because they have interest in putting a historic sign and a bench somewhere on the property. As you know, the meeting house is probably the central feature of your historic district. And the Quakers have been there for over 300 years. However, with the placement of the trail, I can't tell you how many times passersby have said, what is this? What is this? So we were thinking, the meeting was thinking that the placement of a historic sign would assist in passersby and residents understanding what it is that's on the corner, on the corner of Pale Pike in 352, as well as memorializing some of the history, some of the important history behind its location and the meeting. And of course, one of your watchwords is respect and past. So we thought it was a good idea and we came to the Historical Commission to show them what we were thinking, because we don't want to do this unilaterally. By the way, you can't tell me what to put on the sign. You can tell me where to put the sign.
I know.
And I won't even play the game, tell you to put the sign. I was a suggestion. Tell me where to put the sign.
That's right.
Tell me what to put on the sign, that's the main case.
I will, I accept that. I accept that.
We just asked.
Jack, I have a question and I wanted to get this in. I was at the meeting and I enjoyed the presentation, thank you. You want a bench and a sign, right?
Yes.
Who's gonna pay for these? Are we paying for them or are you paying for them?
The meeting is willing to pay. If the township wishes to support us in any way, it will be gratefully received. I know that the benches can be made in-house, so that might be a way that the township can contribute to this effort. We can supply the materials and you can supply the craftsmanship.
And the signs.
Well, we, we haven't decided on what type of sign and that was the reason, one of the reasons we came to the Historical Commission, to sort of get your ideas about what kind of a sign would be appropriate. I guess the thinking is maybe a metal sign, similar to the Pennsylvania Historic and Museum Commission signs that you see across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. But I know that your historic district signs here are wooden and those are also very attractive. So that certainly could be considered. But we wanted, you know, before we take firm steps to go out and get this done, we wanted to make sure that we were, that the township was on board and that you had heard our concerns and that we'd gotten whatever input you wanted to give us.
I think it's a very nice idea, it adds interest and adds information and adds to the character of our community. I think it's great to know.
I think it is too.
I can't tell you how many people now we see going on the trail. I think the trail is a wonderful amenity.
Say what?
Say anything. It's a wonderful amenity.
Say it again.
It's a wonderful.
It's a wonderful, very expensive amenity.
So, you know, if you want to be a super deluxe township, you have to have amenities.
Say it again, Jack.
For your residents.
So you're wanting to vote for this?
By the way. The meeting is going to be easement at the corner of Pale Pike and 352, so that you can put the trail up there. So that's a significant savings.
The, the whole Historical Commission was in favor of this, by the way, and good favor of it.
Yeah, we have a motion, a suggested draft motion that the group that the board supervises support the Goshen Monthly Meeting request for a historical marker and commemorative bench to replace the Jason Pale Pike Trail on the north side of Goshen Monthly Meeting property located at 14 North Chester Road. Upon completion, the final design and location shall be presented to the board for review and approval.
Friendly amendment? I would love to see. It, it's on, it's off, I don't know.
I would like to suggest that beyond that, we authorize township staff to negotiate with the Friends, cost of construction, that sort of thing. With us getting together with it.
Of the bench, you mean?
The bench especially, but also the sign.
I, just a quick comment, I prefer the metal historical marker signs, it'll be, it'll endure.
I agree.
And it'll look like a historical marker and I think that's, I would like to see that. Just give you a heads up if you come back for a final approval. I just think that metal signs are.
I agree.
People stop and look at those.
Did we give a second on that yet?
No.
Second it. And I have to tell you that I think it's great, I agree with David. I think that a metal sign would be best. I mean, I think that it really, it would be much more enduring. And I have to tell you that I think that you probably could even get a, some type of a, an enclosure that you could mount either on the bench or on the sign that would actually hold maybe some information regarding the Quaker meeting. Because I think that it's very important that you do provide that history to the community. I think that'd be a fantastic way of, of getting it out there too. That way, there's not as many questions.
We'll put our QR code on the bench.
That's perfect.
We're right in to the history.
Yeah, I think that's.
Environmentally sound.
Everyone reads the, our newsletter too, so when you're ready to finally post something, they include the history, I think it's a stat.
Hopefully, maybe we get to end up getting a picture in the newsletter, Robert wants it.
Of course. I would say though, the cost of the metal is going to be significantly higher. So I think that that's something that, as long as the Friends are willing to maybe work something out with the township staff.
Participate.
Yeah, participate, there you go.
Any public comment on the motion? All right, any call question, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
No. Motion carries, thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Jackson.
Great building and once assigned to indoors, one was 300 years from now, it'll still be there. Okay, next item is to consider Sustainability Advisory Committee's confirmation, the 6th of October, which is tomorrow.
Can I actually make a couple of comments on this for you, Mr. Chairman? This is a resolution that, oh, good heavens. Thanks, yeah, mine is giving us a little bit of a beatbox rhythm there. This resolution is, it's interesting. This is actually the 11th celebration of Energy Efficiency Day nationally. And this is the first time that we, we'd actually be proclaiming it as such for East Goshen. So the SAC has, the Sustainability Advisory Committee has actually asked that we proclaim an Energy Efficiency Day. And I hope that the township staff and residents who are listening will think about that tomorrow and maybe use half of their light usage as they, as they can. Just keeping in mind it is an Energy Efficiency Day, turn off your lights and whatnot. So we really appreciate your support on this.
Would it be contradictory to ask that we flash on our sign out at the Crossroads that it's Energy Efficiency Day or would that use up too much energy to?
It's on anyhow.
We could just turn the sign off and put it in, in post on.
I, I think then, I think then that we ought to flash it on the sign, since it's tomorrow.
All right. Yeah, the resolution doesn't ask us to, to buy anything, it just asks us to recognize the day. So I think that I will, I'll make the motion to approve the resolution to proclaim Personal Wellness Day in October 2021 as an Energy Efficiency Day in Goshen.
Second, oh, all second.
Any further board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
No, motion carries for nothing.
I want to just continue to commend the Sustainability Committee, Advisory Committee. They, they are doing a really good job to educate us for outreach. A lot of this is a big win over a long term. It takes perseverance and endurance to continue to push the message out there as people gradually change their patterns and characteristics of our lifestyle. And I, I just think they're doing a really good job.
Thanks, Mike. All right. Next.
Looks like we.
Okay, there's stormwater.
Yeah, this is for a, our ongoing monthly, we have these various stormwater management operations and maintenance agreements with various properties. This one is, staff has recommended the board authorize the chair to sign a stormwater management operation maintenance agreement for 1630 Margot Lane. And that is the motion.
I'll second that.
Any board comments?
No.
Public comments, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
No. Motion carries for nothing. That is it for new business, any other matter? Anybody have any other matter?
Yes, I, I do have one matter and I don't know whether we can address tonight, but briefly. And that is some correspondence we received from a good fellowship ambulance, Chaz. Chaz Brogdon, I can't remember. Brogan, Chaz Brogan, has given us a bit of a brief and a, and a request to support a current house bill, 1293, which has to do with changing the laws to allow insurance, or to require insurance companies when they are reimbursing, if you will, for ambulance service and that kind of dispatch the first responder directly rather than the residents who will receive the service. And I think it is, it is a proper way to handle the, the distribution of those funds for that service from the insurance company. Certainly, we know our first responders have a lot of pressures, as we, we all do, with sustaining and their operational costs continue to go up. So I think it's a good bill to support, so I thought I would bring that up tonight and see if we could have a consensus and whatever we need to do to send a note to our state representatives and let Chaz and Kim know over there that we would support it if that's the consensus.
I think it's a great idea. Just so people might not know that a lot of times ambulance services bill the resident, the resident gets paid, ambulance service bills the resident and the resident keeps the money and we don't want our volunteers and then our services to become collection agencies. So this bill would remedy that situation. So I think it's a great bill and I support the letter from East Goshen.
Does it need a motion for that or is that just?
I think the board's okay with it, the way I'd like to proceed is actually specifically get in touch with Chaz, get his input on what the best route would be for us. I don't know if he has specific legislatures they're working with or if he would rather us do something else as far as pass a resolution. So I'd like to get a quick opinion.
I don't think we should, I don't, I don't think under the new Sutryn Act amendment, we're allowed to.
Oh, take up a new.
We're not allowed to take, don't worry. We're not allowed to take that up and make a motion, but, but staff, can I be directed to?
Are we gonna get a legal bill from Michelle now or not?
Yes, you will.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think.
About the new act.
I'm not a lawyer, I just played one on TV.
If Derek, if Derek lacks more details, then he can put on a agenda.
Yeah, that's what we do.
Okay.
That's great, I'm in favor of that.
All right, any, any other?
I'm obscured. Especially with the solicitor here.
All right. Public comment?
Yes. I don't know how, I don't know how you're gonna get an insurance company. It's not their named insurer. The best you're gonna do is.
We can't hear you, Joe.
Oh, Joe, do you mean on the list?
He's referring to 1293 House Bill.
It's, it's a.
1293 House Bill.
Yeah.
I don't think you'll ever get an insurance company to issue a check directly to the first responder. The best you're gonna do is have a check with both names on it, a joint name.
The state requires it by law.
The first responder is not a named insurer.
No, but they provide a service. So I'll have to provide the services, but I, we get it, yeah, but I, I see, I hear what you're saying.
I agree.
But hospitals.
But it's the state's legislature, worry about that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see.
It actually lands there for a vote only, but.
Yeah, that's a good point, Joe.
Well, hospitals are not a first named insurer either. And they pay the hospitals and the service providers all the time. So if, if, if the state legislates it.
Yeah, then we'll be done.
That's accident, oh, this is casual. It's just like if your house runs down.
Oh, why?
They don't get the check to the contractor, they get the check to you, you pay the contractor.
It's a health service.
It's health service.
They can put on an additional, you know.
No, but it's a health service, it'd be transported to a hospital.
I'm just, I'm a whole court.
Yeah, yeah, and at this point, ambulance companies.
Oh, no doubt, no doubt, I, I appreciate it, that's good comment.
All right, any other public comment?
Any motion?
The only thing I'll, I'll comment is that Josh Shapiro today issued 48 criminal counts against energy transfer for their activities statewide. While he was making the announcement of all legal fluke lines.
Oh, is that right?
I took that as a sign. He was in Chester County, but he's suing on behalf of all the counties that have been impacted by, by the state. We still have the DEP that won't hold permits and still PUC with their issues. But at least we have the chief lawyer in the township and the state taking action. So I just want to make that public announcement.
I'll also note and piggyback on top of that, I think most of us, I hope, received our pipeline safety information from Adelphi Gateway, their publication that they sent out. If you haven't received it, it's, it's not perfect, but there's, they're, at least they're sending it out. I don't know about the others, but we're receiving. There.
Mr. Chairman, are you willing to entertain a motion to dismiss adjourn? Oh, you have to acknowledge correspondence first, okay, sorry.
Yeah, I just want, I just.
I'm on. I can talk.
We, we can acknowledge that we received correspondence, it's, it's in the public, it's in your packet if anyone wants to read any of those. Acknowledge receipt of that correspondence. And yes, now it's showing.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting, please.
Second the motion.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, no.
Now, I just want to make a note here, it says adjourned at 8:45.
Oh, no, I, I have to sit here for 20 minutes.
I'm trying something new, all the resolutions are laid out on the table.
Oh, okay, all right.
We can take orders.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. My mic is still on.